Good evening and welcome to the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting, the hour being after six forty-five. It is my high honor and privilege to call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. This is a very special school committee meeting where we have a lot of wonderful and positive news to report to our community. We're also very excited to have our young writers here with us again. Our favorite part is our recognition part of the school committee meetings. But before we begin, I think it's important, there's so many wonderful things in the future of our district, but it's also important to be mindful of our past. And a few days ago, a long-term Walpole Public Schools supporter staffer, Ms. Mary Anne Borajin, passed away. She was the superintendent secretary and before that she was the high school secretary for many years. So we'll just have a brief moment of silence for Ms. Borajin.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is recognitions. We have the Walpole Cultural Council writing contest. Dr. Goff, would you like to kick it off?
Mr. Buck. So in early March, the Walpole Cultural Council kicked off its first writing contest, and it's called Walpole Write. So the townwide writing contest was open to all residents of Walpole and non-resident students at Walpole Public Schools. And they had several categories, short story, poem, memoir, for different age groups. And we have these talented individuals here that we would like to recognize. So when I call your name, if you could just stand so we know who, everybody can know who you are, I was able to get around to most of you before we started to see you. And if I do mispronounce your name, I've practiced, but please, I want you to make sure that you correct me, okay? So for elementary short story, we have Madeline Smith, which is a story of Daisy Greenbrook. There she is. Ryan Gerdar, Bunny the Laundry Boy, sorry, Bunny the Laundry Boy. Angela Joji, Eliza's Dream. And then for the poem, we have Adriana Torres, A Little Green Seed, from Johnson Middle School. Leah DeBoer, The Turtle I Met, Wolf's Road. And then in middle school, the short story, we have Najara Akol. And you're going to hear her name several, several times. She also, and then I also want to recognize, I don't think he's, but Ishaa Venkatesh also came in and plays for short story for Tinker and Amber, so I'd like to recognize him. Najara also was recognized in one for her poem, First Sight Perception. And then she was also for her middle school memoir, Hidden Scar, so congratulations. We also want to recognize Kaylee Ebb for middle school poem, Bullying Be Gone. And then also Carrie Cabral for He Made Us. I don't think she could be here tonight. In high school, for her, for the, for the short story, we have Suhi Thi Gola Kota. If he's here. I'd like to recognize this short story, Serenity. And then in high school, the winners for the poem contest, Sarah Vanderlinden, Sometimes I Crave Significance, and Margaret Singer, New Ragernock. So we'd like to congratulate them on a job well done.
Thank you very much for joining us. This is now your opportunity, if any of you would like to come up and speak perhaps about the creative process or what drew you to writing, you're more than welcome to come up and sit on one of the two chairs. And then we'll ask the committee members if they have any questions for you. But please feel free. I see a brave soul, perhaps. Come on up.
Somebody has to be the first.
Somebody has to be the first.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. This is your moment.
And please state your name for everyone at home.
Um, I don't know how to do this.
Okay. Yep, just speak normally.
I don't know.
Leah.
My name's Leah.
Excellent.
Leah DeBoer.
What was your poem?
My poem was The Turtle I Met, and I was really excited to write it because I really wanted to meet a turtle, and I love turtles so much, and I hope that would inspire people to write things about the things that they love and hope to see.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Would anyone else like to come up?
Go ahead.
Come on down.
So my poem, First Sight Perception, we were actually writing social justice poems in English class, so we all had to pick a topic that we were very passionate about, and I chose stereotyping because I feel like as a person of color growing up in the United States, it's something that I face a lot on a day-to-day basis. And I wanted, like, writing is one of my favorite things to do. It's the way I can express my thoughts and feelings in a concise way that can get everyone to understand what I'm trying to say. So as I wrote this poem, this is what I was thinking about.
Thank you very much. Very good. Very good.
My short story was Bunny the Laundry Boy. I got the idea for this short story because I read a lot of funny books, and I read one about this idea, and I just mixed it up in my head.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up?
I wrote the story, the story of Daisy Greenbrook, and I got the idea from all, because I really like flowers and all the plants on the outside. And on a car ride one day, I saw like a lot of rundown buildings, and that's where I got the idea of the rundown factories.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Very good.
My name is Angela Joji, and my book's Eliza's Dream, and I got the, I got the inspiration to write the story because I love astronomy, and it's not a topic most people talk about, and I really wanted to be known as a well-known topic because astronomy is really important.
Probably me. Questions from the committee or comments? Mr. Ahern and Ms. Galavan?
Do you know if there's a place to access these? I'm a little ashamed to say that I haven't read them.
I believe they are online, correct?
Yeah, I'll see if I can get you the link.
I'm very inspired after the introductions to them to go and digest them.
Ms. Galavan?
That was one of my thoughts, too. It would be nice to be able to, to enjoy the full stories. I guess, which I just wanted to say, I think writing is just such an important skill. So the fact that all of you love to write is gonna, it's gonna serve you well. And I like the fact that it was a mixture of, like, the persuasive essay, or the persuasive poem, I guess it was, and creative writing. They're, they're both really important, so keep doing what you're doing. You make us proud.
Excellent. Dr. Goff?
I just want to recognize and not to put on the spot, the person who just came in. If you could just state your name because you do deserve to be recognized.
Yeah, I'm Suhi Thi. My story was Serenity, and I was inspired because during the pandemic, I found myself going like into the woods in my backyard a lot and like observing nature. And I like realized, like, once we came back to school, like, full and person, the difference between like enjoying nature and like being out in like the city, or like, I guess not really a city, but like with more people versus like the tranquility of nature.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Goff?
I just also want to thank and give a shout out to the Walpole Cultural Council because they're really responsible for this, and they're a state agency that supports the arts, the humanities, and the sciences. And they have given us numerous grants to Walpole Public School System throughout the years, and I know I've been a beneficiary of it at the middle school, and Bill Hahn has too when he was at Johnson. So they, they really do a lot of work, and they're also seeking new members for immediate appointment, and it really helps to have members from the town of Walpole when we do apply for these grants because they do know our schools and all the hard work that we do. So thanks, I'd like to thank her.
I know our colleague, Ms. Donizio, who couldn't be here this evening, is on the cultural council and wanted to express her love for all of our students and their tremendous work, and they're always looking for other ways to create outlets for our students to not just learn within the school day, but also create art for our wider community. And so we're, we're just very proud of all that, and we'll work with Mary to make sure that all of your stories go out with our newsletter tomorrow to our vast reading audience as well, for a little more exposure.
And as a former English teacher, I love it. So keep it up, all of you. Keep it up. Nice work.
Very good. Well, thank you all very much for joining us this evening. Please feel free to stay. But.
Not the born part.
Not the born part.
Not quite yet.
The next time we get.
Really nice. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney. Laura's yours for the high school update.
Good evening. I am Colin Mahoney, and I'm a sophomore at the high school. The first term just came to an end on Monday, November eighth, at the high school. And last week, the high school started the alternative Wednesday schedule, which is where on Wednesdays every week, there's an intervention period. Students may use this period to get help from their teachers. And last week, there was over three hundred students who signed up to meet with their teachers for this period. Parent-teacher conferences are coming to the high school, with the first date being tonight and the next one being next Monday, the twenty-second. Walpole High School parent-teacher conferences will be taking a different approach than in the past years, and the conferences will be held both virtually and in person this year. The conferences will be held in teachers' classrooms opposed to the open spaces in the high school as in the past. A couple of weeks ago, Student Council hosted their annual fall yard cleanup, and after having to take a break because of COVID, the Drama Club was also able to host Susical the Musical this past weekend. The Community Service Club is accepting donations for the Walpole Food Pantry through November nineteenth, and they're accepting paper products, canned and non-perishable goods. This week is a spirit week at the high school, and the students have really been enjoying it. Best Place is holding a Friendsgiving tomorrow on November nineteenth after school. Fall sports have found success this year as the season's widened down. The girls' soccer team made it to the second round in tournament play. Walpole Field Hockey advanced to the finals this Saturday. Cheer moves on to states next weekend. Boys and girls cross-country competed in the divisional championship meet this past weekend. And boys' soccer's made it one round in the playoffs. And also football will play their final game in Weymouth on Thanksgiving Day. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahoney. Any questions for Colin? Ms. Galavan, we appreciate your report. Please feel free to stay as long as you like. If I have unanimous consent of the body, we'd like to take the COVID update out of order. Is that, isn't everyone? Excellent. Ms. Garvin, Dr. Goff, you want to kick it off?
Ms. Garvin, I'll start, and then you can chime in as, as seems to be the normal practice these days, right? I'd just like to give COVID vaccination, start there, an update. Byrd Middle School is at forty-eight point five percent vaccination rate, and Johnson Middle School is at a forty-seven point four vaccination rate. We'll probably see those steadily climb as, now that they've opened the vaccines for our, for our younger folks. Walpole High School is now at eighty point seven percent. The students are at ninety, seventy-nine, sorry, seventy-nine point five percent, and the staff are at eighty-five point eight percent. So the staff have actually put, put the students over the top to reach the eighty percent mark. Twenty-seven out of one hundred and eighty-nine students have their first dose. So what does this mean? With your approval or consent, you would, the next step is you would authorize me to apply for a waiver with DESI. Then if or when DESI gives approval for Walpole High School, then at the following meeting, school committee would then continue to determine if you wish to go mask optional at any given date. At that meeting, we'll provide you information from Kathy, Garvin, and then also our Walpole Health Department. Please remember that according to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, this waiver would be optional for vaccinated students only. As of Monday, DESI received twenty-three requests to lift the mask mandate and has approved thirteen. Some schools that were approved, they've gone mask optional, like King Philip this past Monday and Norwell. Other schools that were approved, they've maintained status quo, such as Westwood, Westboro, and Ashland. Others may be waiting to set the start date for after winter break as our younger students have the option to get vaccinated, or after the commissioner's announcement, which should be prior to early January. Hopkinson was another, just to give you background information, because I meet with the superintendents frequently. Hopkinson has, I believe, a ninety-eight percent vaccination rate, and they require proof of vaccination and parent permission for vaccinated individuals. They did vote to do a three-week trial period, and masks will now be required again starting November twenty-second, just before the Thanksgiving holiday. You know, we do need down the line to think about the logistics of implementation if we do get waiver approval, especially monitoring non-vaccinated individuals. It's just important to understand that this is difficult to enforce or police, and DESI has left the logistics up to the individual schools. Last week, we had nine cases, which is up from the three cases the week prior. We are seeing a spike in cases so far as of yesterday, Wednesday. We had seven cases this week, but today, we just had another six test positive, for a total of thirteen, which is the highest number of cases we've had this year. Out of the ten cases this week, half have come from the high school. To date, we've had sixty-nine cases compared to the twenty-three last year at this time. It's just important to be mindful of the COVID nineteen prevention measures today, and I think Kathy, if my numbers are right, we had forty-five students in one grade participate in test and stay protocol at Johnson, having been designated as close contacts. So just another reminder that if students are experiencing symptoms, to please stay home. From the Walpole Health Department, I was able, they were gracious enough to give me some information. They received their, Walpole's positivity rate for the most recent reporting period has gone up. The positivity rate, which you have in front of you, is currently three point four five percent, and you can kind of see, you know, the, the history of it that's in front of you. Given the increases in cases as well as the upcoming holidays, which may trigger indoor gatherings, it's the Walpole Health Department's recommendation to hold off unmasking our students at this time. We still need to apply for, for a waiver, so that wouldn't happen anyways. The Health Department understands that Walpole High School may soon be meeting the eighty percent vaccination requirement. However, as you see from the positivity rate for the community, it's seeing an upward trend. The Department of, Health Department is also aware that they currently have multiple COVID cases involving Walpole High School students, which they say would support the recommendation in holding off with unmasking the school at large. They said this responsibility for both the school department as well as the Health Department is to provide students with in-person learning in the safest, healthiest way possible. They recommend and believe that by extending the mask mandate until at least January would be adhering to the mission to the best of our ability. In addition, per CDC advisory, in order to maximize protection from the Delta variant and prevent the possible spreading to others, CDC is recommending that fully vaccinated people should wear a mask indoors and public if you're in the area of substantial or high transmission. I was just notified this afternoon, Walpole is currently at high risk. On Monday, when I talked to the Department of Health, Walpole was at substantial risk. So since then, we've increased to the highest, the high transmission risk. Again, this is the report from the Health Department tonight. I will check for another update for the December meeting to see if there have been other changes. We do have vaccination clinics for this Saturday and Sunday. Families did all receive a sign-up information. That's going to be held Saturday at the Council on Aging from nine to three, and then also Sunday, November twenty-first, this coming Sunday, at the Council on Aging at nine to three. And I don't know if we're full. I know Saturday, I thought there was like one slot left, but I think we're okay for Sunday.
Saturday's pretty much full, and Sunday, there was about half full, so there's still another hundred and fifty, but that's positive because there was also three hundred that were vaccinated children, five to eleven, last weekend as well.
So we're seeing a lot. Anything to add, Kathy? Anything I missed?
No, I think that's it. I mean, obviously, it's concerning that we're seeing more cases in the school, but I, I feel like it's the post-Halloween surge. There was a lot of Halloween parties, all grades, elementary through high school, and I think that's what we're seeing, and kids are inside more and outside. The difference between last year and this year, of course, is last year, we were, everyone was at the, there were no vaccines, there was no treatment, everyone was very anxious, so, and we were all wearing masks indoors everywhere and pretty much outdoors, too. There was no, no time that you really weren't wearing masks. So I think it's, it's all attributed to, that's what the difference is now. We're just, inside the schools, we're wearing masks now just because of the high transmission. We'll start wearing them more inside in towns that are at high risk. But that's why I think we're at sixty-nine. We took off the summer numbers because it was worse if you started it on.
It would have been up to ninety, so.
That's why we're seeing such a, you know, threefold increase in cases this year for the same timeline. But I'm encouraged that so many children are signing up, and, you know, that, that's what we're, we'll just have to see how it plays out, I guess, once more people get vaccinated in the schools. And I think the sixth grade's coming along nicely. I had run some numbers, so they're starting to pick up already, so.
Thank you both. So to summarize, we are plugging along with vaccinations. We have reached eighty percent at the high school. We have a request to pause from the Board of Health, and the next course of action could be to seek the waiver, which will take some time to process. Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Ahern?
Is the request something that we're discussing tonight, the initial to authorize Dr. Goff to take action?
That's, that could be on the table, yes.
And Sean, you know, just to, you can get the wa, if you get the waiver, it can, it's just that we have it. We have it in our pockets.
Yeah.
And then you can choose, like, other towns, like I use, Westwood as an example, had approval. They chose to, you know, hold, but they have it. So once you hit it, you have the authorization, if I have your authorization, I can go ahead and apply for it.
So we, sorry if I'm speaking out of turn, so we have one vote to move forward with the application, and then DESI acts, and then the school committee would vote when it would go into practice because it would be an adjustment to our policy.
Correct. Ms. Syrek?
Do we know why schools are being denied? Is it because of the positivity rate in the town?
No, we don't know. I know for, for one particular school, the middle school was also sharing a similar space with the high school.
Okay.
So the, the state said no.
And, yeah. Okay.
That was COVID, I think.
Yes.
Is there any, Ms. Galavan, do you have any?
Yeah, I'm just thinking. I don't want to give a message that we're ready to move forward. This is just my opinion, because I don't think, I, I'm not ready to move forward. So I don't know whether it's a good idea to hold off totally or not. How long does it take to get a waiver approved?
It's pretty quick. It's, it's within days. So, you know, if we, we choose to wait and do it another time, the turnaround has been, it's been very quick. I do know I have, we have a meeting with the commissioner next week, so we may get some more information before the next school committee meeting. It, it does not take long. It's not something that takes like a week, a week and a half on end. It's, it's fairly quick, unless they see that there's an issue, and then they'll send it back, and then you resubmit.
Yeah, I'm just worried about the communication piece of it. Like, you know, I definitely heard that Westwood has been approved for no masks, which is different from what you just said, that they're not ready to use that.
Right, right.
So, you know, I'm just, I'm worried, I'm a little bit concerned about if, if we're honoring the recommendation of the Health Department, would we be better off just waiting a little bit? That's just my thought.
Points well taken. Further thoughts or comments from the committee?
So if we, so I guess our timeline, I was just looking, we have a meeting tonight, we're meeting the ninth of December and then the thirteenth in the new year.
Correct.
And we expect that at some point between now and the fourteenth of January, DESI will make their recommendation about what'll happen the fifteenth and.
Correct, so we do have time, and it's, whatever the school committee decides, it's no, no, you know, more or less work. It's, you know, I can apply for it whenever the school committee does agree.
And Nurse Garvin, you'll, by the ninth, you'll have Thanksgiving numbers, right?
I would assume that it will look, the trajectory will look similar to last year because we saw, this is exactly when we saw the first kind of uptick, and then we saw it again right after Thanksgiving, and then right after the Christmas holidays, that break, and then it kind of stayed a little bit level till February vacation, and then, you know, and then finally, when the spring came around. And so I don't think we're, I think we'll still see the trajectory. I'm just hoping it won't be quite as steep, maybe is the word I would use. The testing is obviously working well to keep the students in school, but as Dr. Goff mentioned, one school had forty-three. Today, due to the numbers at the high school, we tested another twenty-four there. So that's, that's a lot in one day. We're at just over a thousand tests for the year. Only three positives so far found in the test and stay program. So that's, that's good. It's helping our students to stay in place, and they're not having to quarantine if they're exposed in the school setting. But a lot of the transmission is in the households, and those students do have to stay home and quarantine. They're not eligible for test and stay.
Okay.
I have a wonky question. I know DESI has obviously empowered the school committees to decide about masks, but the Board of Health has its own role in how binding is their recommendation. I mean, they've, they were the ones who basically decided how townside buildings operated, so I think that probably gives them a fair amount of weight in other situations. You know, they've, they've dictated where, how long our after-school sports could last during, you know, the triple E outbreaks in the past. So obviously, we, we want to be working in concert with them.
Yeah, I, I tend to go with the, with the Department of Health's recommendation. They have, they have been nothing but cooperative. When there's times that we sit down and say, do we need to close a classroom? They really sit down and, and look at it with us, and we, we examine where students are sitting and what deems a closed classroom, what's a cluster, and they're not quick to, you know, say, all right, you have to close this down. They do it in a very thoughtful and deliberate manner, and we, we go through it. They, they really err on the side of keeping the, the schools and the classrooms open with the greatest extent, you know, safe as possible. But, you know, that's why we have the test and stay, so we can keep students in school as, as much as possible, you know, as long as it's safe to do so.
Exactly. We have had a couple of clusters at the elementary level, you know, five to six cases in a classroom, and they were, they worked very hard with us to keep the classes intact and going forward and not having the children have to stay home. So that was great. And I recall even back many years ago, the H one N one, that we were at twenty-five percent at Byrd, and they said, nope, you can plow through this. This is fine, keep the kids in school. You know, the children who are symptomatic, go home. It was obviously a different virus and a whole different situation, but they've always been, I think, keen to keep us open, so.
Very good. For the, Ms.
I would make a motion to send a letter, to request from the DESE, it can't hurt us. Like I said, we'll have it in our pocket.
I can be supportive of that, you know, with the stipulation that will be very clear that we're not going to utilize it at this time. We're going to continue to look at our positivity rates and weigh the, the counsel of the Department of Health. And also, I think, Dr. Goff, did you say, was it Holliston or Hopkinson, move to mask, let's then move back? It's, it's not a, once you're over the threshold, it's, you're there forever.
Sometimes it's hard when you open that can of worms, but. Sometimes it's hard when you open that can of worms, but lid back on. But they need to do, and, and they are, they're, they're at a higher rate. But I'll continue to, to talk with the superintendents that, to just see how the, how the schools are faring. And I had a meeting today with the group and I have another meeting tomorrow afternoon and then we'll be meeting on Zoom next week. So we continue to make sure that, you know, we're, we're collaborating and seeing what's working and, and what's not working. I think the hardest part is the, the policing of.
Did you second?
No, I generally don't. Mr. Green, if you want to make that in the form of a motion and get a second.
I did make a motion.
Oh, you did? Fair enough.
It was a motion, yes.
I got confused, sorry. Mr. Hearn?
Yeah, I would like to second and then.
We have a motion by Mr. Green, second by Mr. Hearn, discussion.
So just on the, the rollback side of it, you know, we would vote, whenever the vote is, to adjust our school committee policy. And then as it's needed, if there is a need to re-mask because of some reason, would we have to wait? Or is that something, Dr. Goff, that you can do, where the school principals can do? Because that's, one of my things is I don't want to have this held up by our, you know, we meet on a regular basis, but we don't meet in crisis.
Correct. We can word it so that if you, the school committee would have to be aware of the change, but you wouldn't have to wait to amend the policy. You would say that it's subject to change per and, and work it that way.
And if we voted favorably, you know, like Nancy mentioned, like the communication portion and Bill mentioned with the Board of Health, and they've made their recommendation clear, which I'm incredibly grateful for. Yes, we can, you know, I think I've already asked the questions, but just trying to process it out loud. So we can move forward and it is, it's not a expiration of DESI's approval. It's, as we feel it's appropriate.
And DESI's subject to change. We all know that, right? They say they change a lot. But what, when you look at other districts that, that have it or have been approved, that doesn't necessarily mean, to Nancy's point, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's mask optional. It's just saying that the state has, has said it's okay. But like other districts have done, they've chosen not to, not to move forward with it and to table it until a future school committee meeting.
Yeah. I, I think I feel, you know, we've mentioned and it's unfortunate that DESI's tied these numbers to vaccinations. And I mean, I think that's a motivation for some of the students especially to get a vaccination. So I think I'm probably going to vote in favor of moving forward at this time because, you know, I want to honor some people's, you know, motivation for it. But, you know, I think it's very prudent to, you know, hold off, you know, especially now when we have, you know, Thanksgiving and based on last year's trends, you know, be very cautious about when we actually are able to implement it if the waiver is granted.
And some, and to your point, Sean, what I did not mention, that some, a couple, some other towns, they also have other metrics other than the 80% who had approval. I know you can look up Midway and they have a variety of metrics, too. And one of those metrics is that your, your town's positivity rate is below a certain percent in conjunction with the, the mask percentage, the vaccine, I'm sorry, the vaccination percentage. So they have several metrics in place, not just 80%, so.
So, Mr. Green?
I would make a point as well that I'd be curious, I'm going to guess that seniors are vaccinated at a much higher rate than freshmen.
I have that.
And, and the freshmen tend to follow each other around all day, so if it's only 50% of the freshmen.
I, do you want me, do you want me to give that to you, Mrs. Park?
Sure.
Grade nine, 78.6.
Okay, good.
Grade 10, 79.2. Grade 11, 80.2. And grade 12, 79.7. Staff, 85.8.
Mrs. Galvin?
I'm, I'm not going to vote in favor of this because I think that there's a lot of pieces that we have to figure out. I think that, I, I, I mean, I know that voting for it doesn't mean that we're ready to move forward, but I think it does give an indication that we're moving in that direction. And I just feel like, I would like to know whether it makes sense to think of other criteria or not. I'm not convinced one way or the other, but more importantly, I just think that, that we're not ready. Like, I don't know how it would get policed. That would be a, a big deal to me. So, you know, it's no, no disrespect, but I'm not going to vote in favor of this.
Mr., Ms. Sarek?
I, I understand where you're coming from, Nancy. I think that because if we get the waiver, we don't have to use it today or tomorrow, I would be inclined to do so. And then we've got, you know, December 9th, where we'll get those rates that kind of look like what happened for Thanksgiving. And then that'll give us more information to maybe make a better informed decision. So I think it's, you know, yes, but, yes, and, yeah, so I think.
Mr. Hearn?
So, Dr. Goff, you mentioned Midway. Is, is that metric actually written into the waiver request?
Um, I don't know. I can find out. I think theirs is they have to be below a 2% positivity rate for the town.
Yeah, I, I like that idea a lot, pulling in a variety of options. But I mean, I think the submittal of the waiver is, I mean, it takes some time to pull together the wording. Like, it's not like as soon as we leave here, the waiver's submitted, we're just giving you, right, the authority to do that, you know, as you're able to pull that together.
Well, you know me.
Yeah.
It won't sit.
Would you like, would you just, for the benefit of, could you restate it before you move it?
Restate the motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve Dr. Goff, approve having Dr. Goff submit a letter to DESE requesting a waiver, given the 80% threshold, with the caveat that, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to exercise it.
Anything further? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? One, two, three. All those opposed? One abstention, one. The motion carries, three, one, one. Dr. Goff, you're now empowered to seek a waiver.
Thank you.
And we will reexamine this on the ninth. Four, I didn't count myself. Thank you, Mr. Han. Good catch, great work.
It's been a long week, Bill. It's been a long.
It's been a long week.
Can I just ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So what I'll do tomorrow, Kathy, is just put the Sunday clinic in my, in my superintendent notes. I just, I won't put the Saturday one because that's, that's full. Okay, all right, I'll just X that out. Thank you. And I appreciate your support again. So maybe I won't talk to you at 5 o'clock this morning tomorrow, so we'll see. I know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garvin. Moving on, our next order of business is an MCAS presentation. Eagerly awaited. I'll begin, for Dr. Goff, do I have to begin?
No, I'm turning that right over to.
Assistant Superintendent Han, please. Take it away.
Thank you, everyone. You've all, 98% of what you have in your packet is accurate for my presentation today. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to take a brief look because we will be going through quite a bit of information in a short amount of time. So certainly at the end, I'm happy to take any questions or concerns that you might have. And I guess you're also welcome to stop me throughout the presentation as well. I started this three years ago and I think it's important to post again. Carol Dweck's goal here, test scores and measures of achievement tell you where a student is, but they don't tell you where a student could end up. While we will be today reviewing Walpole's MCAS scores for ELA, math and science, I always think it's really important to point out that our MCAS scores will never fully define our student and never fully define our district either. But it is an important measure that we take seriously and that we learn from and hope to grow, not only as a district, but also for our individual students. I thought it might behoove us, even though we're kind of fooling now into the next generation of MCAS. The last time we took MCAS before, last spring, was the first time we were fooled, next generation MCAS for ELA and math. So I just thought I would take a minute to review what is different about next generation MCAS compared to our legacy MCAS in the past. You'll see there's an increased focus on students' critical thinking abilities, application analogy, and ability to make connections between reading and writing. And you'll notice later on in the packet, I've included some sample questions that will certainly represent those things. It is fully computer-based, although some of our students still have option for a paper version. But most of our students, a strong majority of our students, take it fully on the computer. It has not changed and that is grades three to 10 for ELA and math and science, technology and engineering. Our, as I'll go over later, our, most of our students take science, STE, in ninth grade as physics. The new standards, and again, this is not too new for some of our, especially our elementary parents, is now exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting or not meeting compared to the legacy, which you might remember was exemplary, proficient, needs improvement and warning. Those standards, the new standards are raised in order to help student signals readiness for the next level, including college and career readiness. There's always the real important caveat that DESI makes sure that it would not be fair to compare next generation MCAS to legacy. So we try to avoid that at all costs. I try to just review for, when I'm reviewing MCAS, the competency determination, just to make clear again that MCAS is, passing MCAS is part of our graduation requirement for all students across the state. There are some caveats to that. Students with a score between 455 and 471 are just required to enroll in an EPP, which is an educational professional plan. A really quick example of that is they'll be required to take a fourth year of mathematics and pass that mathematics class with a lower score. And so even though we, we aim for all of our students to have a passing MCAS scores, there are other pathways for students who do not do as well. And I will add as seniors this year are not required, as the seniors last year, to pass MCAS. And they weren't even required to take MCAS, so it would not be a graduation requirement. We did have juniors take it last year who were interested in state scholarships. So what is new or what was new for the 2021 spring MCAS? The first thing I want to point out is there is an extended administrative timeline. Normally in the past, DESI gives all school districts a window of time that our students have to take ELA, math and science. And typically that window can change a little bit, is anywhere from two and a half to sometimes in the longer end, four weeks. Last year, if my memory serves me correct, it was approximately a two-month window that students could take MCAS. They extended it far later in the year because they knew of the hybrid and non-traditional situations and scheduling in schools. So they wanted to provide more opportunity. So the first thing I want to point out is when we're, when you're seeing our MCAS scores compared to other schools or other towns, just please keep in mind that some towns took MCAS early on in the spring and some towns might have taken MCAS as, as late as June. So you can imagine that alone would create a difference in scoring. Another big difference is students in grades three to eight were randomly assigned one session. You might remember from years past, MCAS is typically a two-session test in ELA, math and science. Some students, students comparable scores might be two different tests. That is not true for 10th grade, just so you know, all of our 10th grade students did take the two-subject test. Students in grades three to eight, learning remotely, could take the computer-based test at home. We were one of six states. I learned that as I put this presentation together to do that. Across the state, approximately 20% of students took advantage of that remote option. Here in Walpole, we were much lower at 6.4%. If you're wondering, we, we manage those tests the same way that we taught those classes. We had a live teacher on the other end of that Zoom platform or Google Meet's platform. And as I mentioned, grade 10 was still two-session and actually fully in-school test. Something I'll go into a little bit later in the slides, that's important to note, is that SG, SGP, which is a student growth percentile, was calculated using a two to three as opposed to a one, the one-year prior cohort. And if you just hold off on that for one second, I'll go into that in greater detail later on. And then there was a redesign of the Parent Guardian report, which I'll review with you now. So DESI wanted to supply for the state a far more parent-friendly elements of the Parent Guardian report. So there are some changes that our parents might, might have seen in the reports that were sent home last month. Some things, you know, I'll go to the slides here. Some things are obvious, like some of the announcements around some of the changes to the MCAS assessment that would, that would stick out to you as you look at the reporting. So it was just general information about some of those differences and things that you would need to know as a parent, like you can see in the bottom left-hand corner. But a better way to look at this is actually seeing a student's MCAS report. And one of the things I want to draw your eyes to is you'll see that in this case, the student received a 510 of meeting expectations. And on each, both sides of the 510 meeting expectations, you'll see little, little dots. That is DESI's projection. If a student were to take the same, the same subject matter test again, that was where they believe that student might fall in range. And that's their way of accounting for that this was a very small sample. So students change and where they could fall if they were to take this, a similar test again would be far more ranging. You'll also notice, if you're familiar, that students were not given standards or specific standards based on the parent report as they were in years past. The state does encourage questions you can ask your child and topics you can discuss with your child's teacher, which knowing, talking to some of our teachers, they have been asked these questions and it actually led some, to some really fruitful conversations. So we encourage parents to take advantage of some of these recommendations and discussions that you can have, both with your son or daughter's teacher and your student as well. So this is going to get a little bit back to the SGP, the student growth percentile. And the reason why I want to spend just a minute on this slide is that we believe the student growth percentile is a really important data point to understand how we're, how we're growing as a district and also areas that we can improve. In the year, in short, in years past, your test score, that let's say if you're a third-grade student and you received a 500 on the ELA score, you'd be put in groups and compared to all students that scored 500 from that third-grade year, same as you. And in fourth grade, you would be compared to those students to measure growth. They would set a percentile of, an average of 50 would be percentile, meaning that's the average growth would be 50%. Because of some of the things and the differences we discussed, you might have students taking different tests at different times. They didn't think it was fair to do that same comparison. So the Massachusetts Technical Advisory Committee did a more historical growth baseline. And so actually, this year, it's really important to point out, the average student's SGP was actually in the 33 percentile. That is a big difference. And not that we're necessarily aiming for average, but someone who sits in a 33, 33 percentile in SGP would be typically compared to about the average growth of a student in the year before. You will notice that we do not have SGP for third or fourth grade this year because students in fourth grade did not take it as third graders. And there's no way to set a standard of growth if you didn't take it the year before. You probably noticed as well, there is never SGP for any science, technology or engineering test because of the way that they are spaced out over several years, fifth, eighth, and sometime in high school. That of all the slides I share with you is probably the most confusing. And if there's ever a slide I hope you don't ask me about, it's this one. I am still trying to figure out exactly how they did it. So my goal here was to supply you with as much information and maybe we can teach each other exactly how they did it. All right. So this, this is what I call my, my irony slide. This is, I'm not going to read the paragraph to you, but DESI more than ever encouraged districts to be very cautious and careful in making comparisons to other districts and to years past. And in some cases, in comparisons from subgroup to subgroup. We know that they caution us to make those comparisons for what I talked about, that this was, we're not talking apples to apples in year 2021, spring of 2021. With that said, I am going to share with you some comparisons, but I want to actually suggest that I'm not doing it so that we sit and analyze and compare our data to the state or to other towns, but to give you context, so you can at least see where we stand in the context and you can actually see where other towns also dropped in their growth, also dropped in their meeting or exceeding expectations. So I, I was back and forth whether I even wanted to put this slide in, but I do want to point out the irony is I'm about to engage in and exercise that DESI has cautioned us very, very clear to not do. And so for me, I do actually think still context is helpful in the way that we look at these numbers. I also am going to point out that I'm going to go flood you. I also am going to point out that I'm going to go flood you right now with numbers, which is why I do hope that you had an opportunity to look at this information before. And if you didn't, you and of course, any community member, I would be happy to go over in more detail at a later date. The first thing that I thought was just really interesting to point out was our in-person versus remote MCAS results. You know, there wasn't anyone who was excited about having students home last year and not having students traditionally in school. But I think it's fair to say that we work really hard to provide our students who chose to stay home with as much of an authentic learning environment as possible. And I actually think our percentages reflect that our students at home did have an authentic learning experience. There are some things that we learn from it and that we would do differently, but hopefully we'll never be put in this exact same situation again. One thing I also want to point out is, of course, we're sharing this in percentages because our at-home students is a much smaller percentage than our in-person students. I'm going to show the next two slides will give you an idea of how we scaled in comparison to the state. And so that you can see, as we have typically in the past, we have outachieved the state in every category. You can see this in more detail in case you're wondering, was that true across every grade, across every subject matter? And so something I'll draw your eye to, if you're more, just visually want to take a look at this as opposed to digesting every number, is green is good. Green means we exceeded. Where green is a negative is where we want to be less, like in warning areas or not-meeting-expectation areas. We want to have a lesser number, so that is why you might see a negative number still presented as green. So again, this is a lot of information put in front of you, but just shows you that again, compared to the state, you'll see that we performed well, or in context of the state, maybe is a better way to put that. The other information that I wanted to give that we get asked about often is, well, you know, we have high expectations here in Walpole. And let me be clear, I'm really happy we have high expectations in Walpole. I don't think, you know, just simply making a raw comparison of the state is always the best way to represent us. So what I've also included in your packet is DART comparisons. DART is what DESI, is DART, the DART tool is what DESI would identify as districts similar to Walpole. There's a couple of measures, the simplest way, in my opinion, to explain it is districts that have similar populations with similar subgroup numbers, such as high needs, English learners, economically disadvantaged. And so they'll provide for us across the state, districts that are similar to Walpole. So I've taken a snapshot of some of those districts to provide for you where we stand in comparison to DART districts. And besides for at least one community, you'll notice that very few of the percentage points are very different in a higher or lower capacity. The first slide represents ELA. And at this time, I kind of want to shift and focus on ELA as a whole. So what I provided for you here, so that you get a sense of some of that higher-order thinking and some of the work that our students are doing on our ELAs, is I've given you a sample for a third, fifth, eighth, and 10th grade essay questions. I want to draw your eye to the eighth grade question because this is something that I think is worth pointing out. You'll notice that this letter asks to write a letter to your local government in which you argue that an organization like the Green Belt Movement should be started in your area. Be sure to use details from both the article and the lecture to develop the letter. One of the things that I really want to point out, that we talk a great length here at Walpole, is that literacy in writing is not solely the responsibility of our English Language Arts teachers. And I point out the grade eight question because some of you have received emails from our eighth-grade students, engage in a civics exercise that is part of the Social Studies State Standards, to engage their local governments, to write letters. And so you'll see that I think this is the effort of the ELA, now specifically of MCAS, to make sure that you are seeing the connection across curriculum. And that is something I'll get into a bit later when we talk about our recommendations. I want to note that we have spent time considering writing, not just in English Language Arts and Social Studies, but in addition, we have considered it in our sciences and even in our math. Next slide again brings up our DART districts in comparison to our math achievement. And we are fortunate, just to be clear, we will have at our next school committee meeting, our department chair, Mr. John Rodolphy, and our middle school math coaches be joining us. And so some of your more detailed questions about what I'm about to review will be timely for our next school committee meeting. And you'll see here some sample, short-answer math questions. Again, you'll notice the higher-order thinking questions. As I said it in one conference, next generation is not your grandmother's state assessment. You'll see there's a lot more going on in these questions. You'll see a lot more fill-in-the-box. You'll see a lot more graphing. We've had to work harder than ever, and I don't want to spend a lot of time with our students, I'm being honest, doing test prep, but we've had to work a lot harder to get our students prepared to take assessments on a computer. This does take a skill to read and to graph using a computer. So it's this really fine line that we walk, talking about the content and the curriculum, and then also the skills necessary to take these assessments. And finally, you'll see our science achievement. I will talk about this a little bit later in our recommendations. This is probably our most glaring contrast of lower numbers compared to our DART districts. I will say you see that most vastly in our eighth grade. We don't, I don't have an immediate answer for you on exactly why that is, but I will tell you the one thing that we do think restricted our sciences in the eighth grade is because of our neighborhood cohort model and because teachers cycled as opposed to students. We did have a lot of classes, the majority of our classes, specifically science, that were taught outside of a lab. And so science on a cart, we know, is not as strong as science in a lab. And then I'll draw your eye to our science and technology, engineering questions. If you look just simply at the eighth grade question alone, there's two parts to that question. Identify, part A, identify two body systems that are involved in getting the nutrients from the banana to different parts of the runner's body, right? That question alone requires great knowledge and great thinking. And then look at B, describe now how the two body systems you identified on part A work together to get the nutrients to different parts of the runner's body. I mean, it just requires some real synthesis and some real thinking. You see a lot of, and even the fifth grade question, a lot of the, explain your reasoning and data from table. Where in the past, it was circle the data that relates to this question. Our students are encouraged to be more analytical thinkers. So probably the most important slide or slides are these next ones. And that is, what did we learn? And then what are we going to do from what we learned? Well, just to be clear, all schools, teachers, administrators completed both team and individual analysis of their MCAS results. That could look in the form of a SWOT analysis, we look at the strengths, weaknesses, or oppositions or threats to the work we're trying to do. It could be in the form of a standard analysis or comparisons to the benchmark assessments that we currently give. We learned that our MCAS scores follow the statewide trends with some drops in exceeding and meeting expectation scores. We know that for us, our remote students prefer it similar to in-person students, as I spoke about. We did continue to narrow the gap of SGP between our high-need students versus all of our students. I have a graph that I did not include in the initial presentation that I can show at the end, that we were actually satisfied to see that we have a trend from 2017 to today where our SGP scores from our high-need students are starting to meet the SGP scores of all of our other students. In ELA, students underperformed in our writing prompts. In ELA, students struggled with questions that involved longer reading passages as opposed to the one that had shorter reading passages. In math, middle school students struggle with stats and probability, geometrical standards, and critical thinking questions, especially highlighted in grade seven. In STE eighth grade, MCAS results identified a gap in technology standards and middle school, and like I mentioned, was probably our most stark numbers of production. And we know that Walpole continues to outperform the state averages and show comparable scores with most of our DART districts. So how do we respond? Well, one thing that I want to be really clear about is that we have dedicated from day one, under the direction of Dr. Goff, a commitment to the acceleration, the DESI-recommended accelerated roadmap, pathways to equitable recovery. And you can see that these priorities were reviewed at the start of the year with everyone here and with our teachers, and it's been a focus and will continue to be a focus. And we want to make sure we foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students and families. We're back in full person, and we love the more traditional aspects of being in school with our students. But being back in November doesn't mean that we are all set and everything's connected. This is still a real important part of reconnecting with not only our students but our families. We are a stronger commitment than ever in continuously monitoring students' understanding and progress, both through formative assessments and increased benchmark assessments. And then ensure strong, great, appropriate instruction with just-in-time scaffolds when they are needed, which falls right under two because if we're assessing our students consistently and we're looking at the benchmark for consistently, we're not waiting till the end of the year. We're not waiting till the end of the semester. We are scaffolding, providing that scaffolding right away to our students who are in need. And you might also see that translated in better and improved, more inclusion push-in models of instruction. We know that we have to make curricular instructional adjustments when teaching writing across all grade levels, something that I've already spoke a little bit about. In grades three to five, we, under the work of our principals and Ms. Finley, our units of writing emphasize strategies that demonstrate the difference between predictive and narrative writing. You want to go back to the grade five essay. I'll talk a little bit more exactly what I mean by that. Based on the wild robot, write a narrative that describes what will most likely happen next in the story. Use what you know about the character setting and events in the passenger, write a narrative. We're fortunate enough that we can pool all of our students' writing samples, see their scores, and see what they wrote. And what we noticed is that there was a difference in scores that students in the narrative sense, that part that says, write a narrative that describes what will most likely happen next in the story, is that students actually spent time predicting what would happen versus writing as if they were writing the end of the story. That subtle little difference caused major changes in our scores. That's a depth of analysis we tried to perform to make sure that we understood it. So we are already making shifts in our units of reading and writing to make sure that we're doing a better job emphasizing those differences. In grade six to eight, I spoke a little bit about this already, we're increasing student writing and adapt consistent strategies across all grade levels. Common writing graphic organizations that are working not only in English but also in our science, that some of the steps we take in our experiments in science are very consistent with the steps we take in our analytical writing. Our history department is including more historical narrative prompts, and we're working, continuing, growing and increase diversified writing prompts across all content areas. In grades nine and 10, we're working on increased writing prompts that align with MCAS, more narrative, editorial, persuasive, and informative, and include more synthesis writing in class. We noticed that in our 10th grade ELA, that there were a lot of two-tab writing assignments and a lot more work of synthesis and comparison, something that we can continue to grow on as opposed to just responding and analyzing one single piece of writing. Now getting a little bit more into some unique bullet points. We have to do work to adjust our sixth grade math connections, of course, to include more statistics and probability content. That work is not waiting till next year, that work is happening now and in place now. To develop spiraling strategies to ensure geometry standards that are taught throughout the year. We've had a habit in years past of taking some of our geometrical standards and giving them at the end of the year. We're introducing them earlier and spiraling throughout the year because this is an area we have to improve. And like I said, I'm happy to answer questions, but please know that we will have more details about that the next school committee meeting. We're using our I-ready and common assessments to drive real-time intervention instructional strategies. We've had the habit in years past of responding when it's too late, two, three months down the road, doing more tier-one, tier-two immediate intervention as needed. We're continuing math professional development that emphasizes critical thinking strategies to improve student instruction and engagement. We spoke a little bit about that in the spring, and our teachers at the high school began their year with those critical thinking strategies to improve student-based learning. We are improving collaboration between math and science departments, not just to ensure, like I gave the example in writing, but common vocabulary with probability, algebraic equations. We're addressing gaps identified in the middle school science and technology. That is something that will take a little bit, won't be happening in a week or a month. That is something that I've already started working on with our science cluster and our technology clusters to determine where are we missing specific standards, as that is a test that is science, technology, and engineering that embodies sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. We have a lot of work to audit and look more deeply about the assessment and the curriculum that we offer. We believe in the continued growth of related arts and how important that is to the growth of our students. We know that a student that is passionate and loves to play the trumpet will be more engaged in school, more likely to do well in ELA. We are not just a school that's going to strictly look at ELA and math and STE. We believe in all subjects, even those that are not assessed on MCAS. We believe in our commitment to developing stronger SEL strategies and supporting our students' both academic and socio-emotional growth. We know a student who feels better about coming to school, feels better about who they are, will do better on all assessments. Dr. Goff and I have worked more deliberately this year to emphasize instructional leader strategies for our administrators. And if I could take a second, I think anyone would understand this. For a year and a half, we've asked our principals and our assistant principals and at times, many of our teachers, to focus on operational leadership, you know? Make sure that we're six feet apart, make sure those desks aren't together, make sure we're following that close contact. We are making a deliberate effort and emphasis on getting back to the importance, the single most important thing of our principals, and that is to be instructional leaders. Dr. Goff and I have committed to being in the classrooms more, to doing far more walkthroughs. And this is something that we talk about at length at every single one of our Leadership Council meetings and are set tangible goals of walkthroughs. This is not something we take lightly and something that is an increase from what we've asked of our principals in the past. And then, of course, we are continuing to make the district's mission of educating all students to achieve success. The belief in that might seem so simple and even sound a bit cliche, but is incredibly important. One of my favorite Bill Belichick comments, I think when they were two and four, maybe worse, he said, "We're going to keep back and get into work, there's no special sauce." And there really isn't a special sauce, there's not a single speaker, there's not a single PD we can give a teacher. Not all kids look alike. This is just a lot of thoughtful work that we need to do as a district, and I fully believe that we are committed to it and that our teachers are committed to the work as well. So that is, that brings me to the conclusion of a summary of a lot of different assessments across a lot of different content areas in grades. I do have additional slides here, if the questions come up and I have the slide available, I would be happy to show it.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Han. Questions for the Assistant Superintendent? I know that was a lot of information, but Ms. Tenuzio?
The level of detail and the structure of this presentation is excellent, so thank you so much. I have questions about two things. I'm wondering if we can go back to the DART, one of the DART district slides?
Which one?
Doesn't matter which one. Because I'm just hoping we can clarify, especially for people in the community, what the green and the red numbers represent. For example, if we take the top line of this one and we look at Burlington, their comparison numbers to Walpole are all green, does that mean that they compare favorably to us or we compare favorably to them?
Yeah, and I'll clarify again, I did it quickly when I went over the state. I mean, I hate to oversimplify, but green is good, and green is good in comparison for our district, and red is not good for comparison for our district. And why you see that with positive numbers and negative numbers is the first column is meeting and exceeding expectations. You'll see Walpole, which is highlighted in orange, 58% of our students met or exceeded expectations. If you drop down to Burlington, 50% of their students, so we said that's, we exceeded at 8%. If you go to the next two percentage numbers, partially meeting, which Walpole's 34, or not meeting, which is eight, we would recognize in those incidences that being less of the percentage is positive. So I'm glad you asked again because I went over that very quickly, but that is how we presented the numbers.
Thank you. My other question has to do with one of the things that you said we learned, which is that we continue to narrow the gap of SGP scores between our high-needs populations and, you know, all of our other students. So it sounds like that's been a trend over the past several years. And I guess my question, first of all, would be, how are we feeling about the pace at which this gap is narrowing? And to what do we attribute the positive movement?
Yeah, so this is one of the slides that I didn't put in, but I had available. So this is hopefully, and I can print this out for you if you'd like, or I can send it to everyone individually. But you'll see, here's ELA. Now, the one thing that I just want to be really transparent about, because I believe it's really important to be transparent, especially when you're combining a lot of different numbers, is this is scaled three to 10. So there might be some grades where this is not totally accurate, so I'm taking the average of our three to 10. And so if you look from 2017, let's take math, for example, you'll see that our high-needs had a 43.9 SGP and all of our other students had a 57.7 growth, which was a difference of 13.8. You'll see as you go up from 2017, the gap narrows. Now, what I want to be careful to point out here is that we don't want the gap to narrow because all of our other students come down, which you'll see in 2018 for math, that was a little bit of an instance. But what I, why I'm comfortable is if you see the trend of the next year, you'll see that we jumped back up to a more appropriate 56.2 number, and our high-needs now is still higher in the 50. It is a little bit difficult, and that's why I didn't include this, actually, I was back and forth, because this is where 2021 is just unique altogether. So I don't know if actually this So I don't know if actually this is the greatest comparative, you know, data to be showing. But to see that, you'll see that the trend continues in twenty twenty-one, that even though all the numbers were down as they were across the state for SGPs, that our high need students did have um a far more uh far more of a differential between high needs and all those students. I would suggest for twenty twenty-one, and this is just my opinion. I would suggest for twenty twenty-one, we work really, really hard to make sure we supported our high need students. And we did that through um bringing more of our high need students back for four days a week if in person. Uh uh m- my gut tells me that 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 this is a reflection of that effort and of that work of bringing those students in four days a week. Um I I think that our numbers of high needs across mostly all grade levels were improved in SGP or comparable to our own, all students. Um and I would suggest because those students um were prioritized early on and brought in four days a week before that was um done across the state.
Okay, thank you. So a follow-up to that would be um what are, what are your, what are you seeing this year in terms of those groups of students being prioritized in a way that's going to help us um continue to move in the right direction and close these gaps?
Yeah, so t- there's kind of two ways I'd suggest, that the acceleration roadmap address is just that, that there is a lot more in uh deliberate intention around focusing on the the high need students that need more tiered support. Um and we've also made um a far more deliberate effort that our tiered support that we're providing is a lot more tier one push in. So we are scheduling accordingly, we're we're strategically thinking about the way that our students learn. Um in years past, four or five years down the road, a student might have struggled uh making this up, but in in literacy and that student received, would receive one-to-one literacy support during the literacy time period. That is happening far less now. We are more strategic, even in our instructional model, we do more workshop model, which allows for differentiated small groups where our specialists can push in and not just work with those students who have higher need, but uh might also be working with with all students in the classroom in that capacity. So that's where, and that ties into the work and some of the the mission of the acceleration roadmap as well.
Thank you.
We're going to learn a lot from this year, though, I do want to say that, like, we haven't had, we haven't got this figured out. I don't think I've ever in in my, you know, twenty-two years in education, seen teachers have to work so hard and tran- and, you know, and and pivot and move and detour in ways that we've never had to before. Those that are in education know what's going on this year. And while it feels more traditional, there are some ways that this year is harder for our teachers than it was last year. So I I I'm cautious to package this like, yeah, we got this, like, we're still learning every day. But our teachers are, you know, even that ability to do push in more right now, which was always a goal, a long-term goal for Dr. Goff and I, to do it during this time. The timing's right to do it because we can't be pulling our students out of class to get that direct instruction. But but we're still learning and growing exactly how to do that.
Further questions from the committee, Mrs. Gallivan?
First of all, I think this is a really good presentation. I think it, I I I'm looking at it as like a long-range planning kind of a thing for a couple of reasons. One, that you just mentioned, that I don't think people outside of education are aware of how hard teachers are working right now. That um, you know, it's not just filling gaps because of COVID, but it's i- i- it's a a very complicated job right now. I think that it's also clear that you as administrators are are buying into, this is our job and this is our top priority. I think that's important because, you know, we've talked about it here, that we're not all about test scores. But our test scores have not been where we want them to be. So, you know, this is an important consideration. So when I, when I was thinking about it in terms of just long-term planning, I think we have an opportunity to meet some of these challenges. If we look at this as kind of, three things are coming together. Where in two and a half years, thanks to the Walpole voters, we are going to consolidate our middle schools, which presents an opportunity. And we do want, in the long run, to make sure that we're strengthening our ELA and math in particular. And um I think that that um in in doing that, we have the budget season coming up. And so I think those three things, that's what I was thinking about when I was reading this report. Because I think there are budget implications to what would help us get to the next level in s- in some ways. I know that, and I think that, like I said, the middle school um is a is a huge opportunity to sort of reimagine how we do certain things. So looking at the fact that our next meeting is with the a- administrators, I I just like to sort of lay the foundation for if we want to do better, how is that going to affect our budget? Because um, you know, I think we should be thinking about, do we, if we if we redid a schedule, for example, what would we do to benefit kids? And it doesn't have to wait for two and a half years. It may, some of it may, some of it may not, but anyway, I just, I I think that, I think that you gave us a lot of food for thought, and those those are my thoughts, that um, you know, we cannot put pressure on you to do anything more than it sounds like you're doing. But I also think that we should be thinking budget-wise about what, in order to to do some of the things that we dream about, what what do we need related to those things?
Anything further? Mr. Ahern?
Um just a a follow-up to this, you know, the high needs is kind of a bucket that compiles a lot of different groups into there. Um I was just wondering if any of those areas stood out, like, I know, like, English language learners would be part of that group.
Yeah.
You know, even something like males taking a ELA test generally, you know, perform less than ideally.
Yeah, we um, I I, so this is a MCAS subgroup breakdown for three to eight, um and and this is for 10th grade. For me, one group that still continues to stick out, at least in three to eight, is our students with disabilities, SGP growth. Um i- is something that we're working, Dr. Queely, we're actually um about to engage in an audit of our middle school and some of our inclusion strategies to meet more of our students, and that's a subgroup that stuck out to me um a little bit more as well.
Thank you. And just a addition, you know, I I appreciate the presentation greatly and um, you know, the honesty and transparency with which you presented, um, you know, not trying to shove anything under the rug, but, you know, all of the um what did we learns and how do we respond, um, you know, really good and really actionable as well. So thank you.
Anything further from the committee?
Thank you very much Assistant Superintendent, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, our next uh two items of new business are our FY twenty-three budget timeline and a discussion of ARPA funds, which we will conflate. I know this timeline begins on November twenty-second, it's Mr. Fisher's like go time of the year, it's exciting, it's like Super Bowl, Christmas, all in one. Mr. Fisher, if you'd like to begin, and and I can color it as well from the number of discussions we've had and some moving parts in the last few days as well.
Okay, so in your packet included is the budget timeline. So I just want to kind of go through the timeline, how it plays out for those who aren't that familiar with it. The school department, the school department budget timetable for FY twenty-three will begin in November, and it concludes at the May town meeting, which is seven months later. Once a new budget is approved in May, the school department can focus solely on the current fiscal year budget that ends in June, on June thirtieth. Um and it is a requirement, uh math general law, that we finish the year with an operating budget balance that's in the positive. Um there are three school committee hosted budget meetings that are open to the public and address all of the aspects of the proposed FY twenty-three budget. First one takes place on January eleventh, when we talk about the goods and service budget, all things non-personnel related. On January eighteenth, there'll be a personnel-specific budget meeting where we talk about uh positions that we currently have, as well as uh things that we would like to see within the budget that we don't have currently. Uh and then on January twentieth, twentieth, there's an optional meeting, uh if further discussion is needed on any specific topics. School committee will vote on their recommended budget on January twenty-seventh. Uh just a note about the budget, the budget process is an ongoing process, it doesn't end with the final approval of the proposed budget. The school department is constantly reviewing it, the appropriated budget throughout the year, looking for ways to save money and when possible, re-appropriate funds to areas that need additional funding. There are many variables that impact a school budget that don't impact a more traditional budget in the same way. School committee and school administration have to be ready at all times to adjust to increased needs and find ways to address budget changes that could not have been anticipated when the budget was originally developed. The school department will be dedicating a portion of time during the operating budget development to discuss capital needs this year. This is a new idea uh we, because of the timing of capital. The adjustment to the capital timeline has necessitated this change in order to have thoughtful and timely discussion as the capital process now begins in late spring. This change in timing will support thorough deliberations and additional time to gather pertinent information to be presented. So it's kind of a broader outline of the budget process and what what you guys go through, what we go through, and what our administrators are expected to contribute as part of that process.
Um and to kind of dovetail onto that, we've had a number of of good conversations, uh myself with Chairman Gallivan of the select board, and we are also very mindful of the fact that there's a large pot of additional um federal money out there, which dovetails into um how the school department fits into that. And um we're lucky we're in this time of year, uh because we've just uh received word, I think, uh through uh Mr. Fisher did and and other department heads, that the select board is going to move forward with a a plan that would seek to um utilize all of that money for lost revenue, which would mean it would basically become um free cash, and that they're going to begin to invite departments, including our own, in in January to have discussions about where to move forward. So I think it um previously, we thought we may be having to identify specific um small-dollar projects around this, uh an HVAC unit at Fisher, uh a classroom at Byrd or something of that nature. But um what we're getting from the town side is to think in a much more broad fashion and further, to think in a much more long-term fashion, looking at broad strokes, looking at the needs of each elementary school in the next five, ten, uh twenty years. So it was my thought, as we were having these initial um kind of board-level discussions, it it dovetails in quite well that we will, we will meet with leadership first on December second to begin a discussion, as Mrs. Gallivan said, about perhaps some of these, not aspirational, but the sort of next level of uh budgetary concerns to achieve our goals. But we should also be having a concurrent discussion with building principals about the capital needs of their buildings with an eye towards um a more long-term footing, so that not only, um I think it's it's a great exercise for this body to have a more robust, not only public hearing, but discussion amongst ourselves about what our five-year capital plan looks like. But it it seems that the town is going to ask us to think um in an even longer-term fashion as well and to s- start being, not creative, but really long-sighted uh in how we address the needs. Obviously, we have the high school, obviously, we have, the the middle school project addresses a large uh, a very central need uh in secondary education in a capital sense. But I think there's a general tenor in in Wapole Town Government now that we're looking to have greater conversations with greater depth and meet with more stakeholders. And we can expect um to probably be asked to to meet with the Board of Selectment in late January, early February, to sort of discuss how um our capital needs and possible federal funding streams uh would um kind of come together. So that's the ten-thousand-foot view, and I don't, uh, Mr. Fisher, you have a great um solid budget timetable? Are there any questions or comments about that from the committee? Mrs. Gallivan?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. First of all, just thinking about some of the things that you just mentioned about capital. Did I hear something about um the HVAC at the high school? Are we doing something about that? Is there, is there a concern around it and do we have a plan for it?
Cur- currently, that was one of the amendments filed at the state. Look, this is, this is something that it's very important to be clear about because there's a bunch of pockets of money that a bunch of different people have jurisdiction over. So the Senate was successful in filing an earmark to deal with an HVAC concern at the high school, which was one of the priorities put forward by Jim Johnson, uh that did not get into the House version of the ARPA bill. Um so it's now in conference right now, so that may be um in the near future, the next few weeks or so, that may be taken care of from a different pot of money. But there there was a, do you want to speak maybe in general terms about what the need was there?
Yeah, so so we have been having ongoing conversations with Jim Johnson, Town Administrator, about the need of the wood shop that was recently completely redone, and unfortunately, still has an old ventilation system due to just
Oh, okay.
just the project.
I see.
That project Jim was aware of and reached out because he knew about it and the funding that we had hoped to get COVID-wise, we were uh denied that access to those funds. So Jim did reach out when he saw this pocket of money that was available and is hopeful that that funding would be approved. He did mention that to me the other day, and I was appreciative of him taking that extra step and that he remembered that project as being important to all of us to get that done.
So it sounds like you wouldn't put it on the emergency, we got to do something, right, this moment list, but it's it's a priority?
It's a priority, I would, I would figure out that funding before the beginning of the next school year so that we have that system in place, because it is, it's an important system that's needed in that shop to really maintain a good quality of, you know, healthy shop.
And it's specific to that part of the building, it's not the whole building?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. Okay, um, I think, I may be, I may be in left field on this, but if the ARPA money is potentially being used to recover lost revenue, I would like to make the argument that some of it should go into the operating budget as opposed to be thought of as free cash. Because if we're recovering over a period of time, some of it, I believe, you could make the argument is recurring revenue. Maybe it wouldn't be fair to say all of it.
Um it would have to, I think I would even go further, it would have to be, because if it was not, um if it was from like a revolving account, that that reimbursement would have to go back into the revolving account. So it would all be stuff that dealt with the bottom line. So you're, I think you're absolutely correct.
All right, so I, I think we should be thinking about capital needs, but also operational needs. And I, I guess I'm looking at, we have uh, we have the teacher's contract along with two other contracts to be thinking about right now. And I think that, I'm sure, if we were to ask our teachers and our administrators about gaps that they're seeing because of COVID, never mind, you know, just because in general there are gaps, we probably have some operational needs that I I would like to be having that conversation sooner rather than later. Which leads to my other point, which is, I think we should um try to have a meeting in December with um s- a couple of people from the town side to lay that foundation. I know they had what was a great meeting, apparently, the other night to talk about the operational needs of the public safety departments. Our needs are just as compelling. And, you know, sometimes, once the ball gets rolling, it's hard to say, hey, wait a minute, we we have a few things we need to. So sooner rather than later, I'd like to put a a marker in for December to talk about our operational needs. And um, oh, the other thing that, just to throw it out there, I think when we're talking long-term, that we should be thinking about how we can strengthen our science and technology departments, whether it be at the elementary levels where some of the kids came and presented a need for a science lab last year. And guess what? You know, we should be, i- if we're thinking long-term, we should be thinking about things like that. And I definitely think that that falls into um needs at the high school. So, you know, again, just sort of laying the foundation for what we need to talk about with um our administrators and with the town side. I think those things should be happening in December.
I I concur, and I think with the December second workshop, that'll flow nicely. And we'll, we'll have a really robust discussion then, and so if we can maybe schedule something
Yeah, we can do that, get it, get it timed sooner rather than later.
Coming off that, we can, you know, two or three of us can kind of meet with our counterparts and and take what we have and and get a better, get our arms around and maybe a better way what they're thinking January um is going to look like as they, as they bring in all the other departments as well, um to have discussions about uh long-term needs. So it it sounds like we're, we're just, we're, we're on a footing where there's just going to be much wider. be a much wider and more robust discussion around the budget in general with a capital focus, but I think you're right, there's, this is, there's no time like the present while we're on top of the ball dancing as opposed to under the rolling ball, raising our hands.
Yeah, the thing I would add to that is Jim had shared a spreadsheet that he had done previously for capital and beyond, as you mentioned, the five-year capital plan, but really what's beyond that and big-ticket number items, he had shared that, I think he had gotten some direction from the Select Board that was interested in really enhancing that, that future plan, and he did share out some of that information. Bridget and I both looked at that and were surprised, pleasantly surprised, that the town is clearly putting an emphasis on the school department in a really positive way. I think that coupled with some of the things that we're already doing with some funding that we have available currently, I've been keeping track of that on a spreadsheet that I'll share with you at that early meeting, where you'll see some of the one-time money that we know is one-time, science carts and things of that sort, where we can push into classrooms, our things we're working on now, because we don't want to wait to the end of the year and then say, here's some things you could have used at the beginning of the year. The principals are clearly on board, but, you know, those types of allocations of resources.
I do think December's a good time, I'm sure we can, we can let the gym on getting a meeting, because once we get to January, we get to all the public budget here, I mean, we're out like, you know, every other day, every other night in, in January, it just, it gets really busy.
And it's evolving so quickly that I think a meeting would be perfect, the timing is perfect.
Excellent, anything further? Other questions or comments from members of the committee, Mr. Ahern?
Just a question, we're talking, just the overall picture of the money as it comes in, is it, you know, you mentioned discussing things with the Select Board and us, is any of the spending of those funds subject to like a larger, like the, a town meeting approval, or is that all coming to us, just as someone unfamiliar, or, you know, basically familiar with town government and management, what does that look like?
As far as the federal funding, the ARPA funding, that is classified as a grant, so that is specifically statutorily the Select Boards, which is why we're talking about this now on camera, because they're our good friends and partners, and we really don't have authority to allocate it, but we can advocate very vociferously. So, I think that's, and, and I'm really heartened, I had a couple of great conversations with Chairman Gallivan, and they're, they're looking to do this right with a, with a great deal of deliberation, a great deal of community input, and it's, it's difficult, because on our side, we have, there's all these different pots, there's the bipartisan infrastructure bill could, could direct funding to, that Walpole could utilize for street and road projects, which would then create additional space for more school projects under ARPA, so all these things sort of flow into one another. Also, ARPA is a two-year disbursement process, so there's only half of the town's $7.8 million allocation is available to the town today, you have to wait until May of next year for the other half to be available of, of those funds. It's, some is held by the county where I work, and some is held directly by the town now, so I, I think this kind of planning exercise is, is, will be very helpful as we move forward, and I think the December meeting will be quite helpful as well. Anything further? Seeing none, we, that brings us all the way down to middle school building project. News there, Mr. Breen?
Yeah, I have a few things, and Dr. Goff, you can, you can follow up if you'd like.
Sure.
So, we're in the design and development phase, so the next steps that you might see, if you're picking your kid up at Byrd or something, probably in January, is some surveying of the grounds, so there's a little bit of action on that front. This will be in your court, Dr. Goff, they're trying to plan some programming sessions with staff, see exactly, say, for instance, I would imagine, what kind of furniture do they want in the rooms, for instance, that sort of thing. We're going to hope to get a building committee meeting in the middle of next month, and then establish a, a kind of permanent schedule, at least meeting once a month, more, more often if necessary, and most importantly, there's a joint school committee, Select Board and Finance Committee meeting next week to discuss some of the details as well, so that, is that the 23rd of next, next week? Anything else, Dr. Goff?
I can wait to my superintendent report.
I'm done.
I'm smiling behind my mask, so.
There you go. Further questions or comments on the middle school from the committee? Mrs. Gallivan?
I think we should just thank the community, boy.
Absolutely.
I mean, this was a wonderful, wonderful show of support, and I think that it was clearly a well-thought-out project, but thanks to everyone who, who took the time to pay attention to it and believed that it was a good long-term solution for Walpole, so.
Yeah, thank everybody for their hard work, it's amazing.
And just to add to that, I think we just, you know, our neighbors were recently not so successful in obtaining the approval they needed to address some of their school building issues, and it just, it shows kind of what a fraught process this can be, and I think, you know, we owe a debt of gratitude to the community, we also owe a debt of gratitude to our administration and to Compass and the entire, the school building committee, and everybody who just worked so hard to thoughtfully present the necessary information, to engage with the community, to answer questions and inform people as much as possible, so that they could feel confident in their vote, and, and I'm grateful for, for all of that.
Excellent, Mr. Ahern?
Just a quick question for everybody that did, you know, support the project and wants to stay informed. Mark, you mentioned you're going to put a regular school building committee meetings, would that be the best mode for the community to stay abreast of what's going on?
Yes, and there's also been mention of, of the need for more community forums going forward.
Okay.
Right, not just about selling the project per se or presenting it, but presenting the progress of the project going forward, so. Again, that's, that's tentative, but, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent, anything further? Seeing none, Dr. Goff, superintendent's report.
I already did the COVID, and we did the, the middle school, but just a couple of extra, as Colin mentioned, last Wednesday afternoon, two Wednesdays ago, was the first week of interventions, extra help block at the high school, and I just provided you with a snippet, a handout of some of the examples. This is just a, a sample, I think there were well over 300 students who signed up for interventions and enrichment, and you can just see all the, all the different ones, from ensemble groups to students going to their teachers because, you know, they didn't understand an assignment, to working on college essays, polynomials, you name it, it's, it's in there, so you can, you can look at that at your leisure, and another 100 who are in study hall as well, so it was a good turnout. In terms of visitations, I know Bill Hahn mentioned this, this week and last week, I was at Elm, Boyd and Johnson Byrd in the high school, visiting classrooms and speaking with students. I love going to the elementary schools too, because I really want them to get to know me as someone other than the one who is in charge of snow days, so. It's nice chatting with them and speaking with them and trying to explain to, you know, a five and six-year-old, you know, what, what I, what I do, so, it's great. As Bill mentioned, our leadership council goals, goal is, one of them is to make sure that we all increase our time in the classrooms. We know that there are many priorities and many competing interests, but instructional leadership, leadership that supports the development of teaching and learning is at the core of our profession. In the coming weeks, I'll also be going to the schools to meet with various clubs, like Student Council, MECO, just various after-school clubs, just to touch base with students to, I really want to see what went well in the first few months and, of the school year, and where they may need more support. Next week, just as a reminder, Thanksgiving, early release day on the, next Wednesday, with no school on Thursday and Friday, we've already mentioned that we have our school committee budget workshop the following week. And then finally, in terms, just to add to middle school building project, we all know that on Tuesday, November 2nd, the town of Walpole voted yes on question one, to construct and furnish a new grade six to eight combined middle school at the current location of Byrd Middle School. Currently, the town is executing what we know as a project funding agreement with MSBA. This should be complete by the end of November, at which time the project budget will be set up in MSBA system. TAPE's design team, as Mark mentioned, will be confirming all the schematic design programming decisions as they begin the design development phase, and that's where they have all the high levels of major design disciplines, that comes from architectural to structural to civil, you've got mechanical, your HVAC security, everything, plumbing. That's really adding that first level of detail to all the previous schematic levels of the plans and renderings and narratives. 100% development, design development is targeted for April of 2022, so this will be the first, you know, cost check during the design. Walpole Public, the building committee, as Mark mentioned, will meet regularly through the design phase, and community forums will be held at design milestones to present the project updates. The project website will continue to be updated regularly, and the project emails address is on there, and that'll be available during the duration of the project, so people can continue to submit questions or concerns.
Questions or comments to Dr. Goff? Anybody seeing none? Subcommittee activity, we did briefly give a legislative update. Ms. Donizio?
I'd like to give an update on the master plan steering committee, as the school committee representative to that committee, so last evening, the first community forum about the upcoming master plan was held at Walpole High School. So, first of all, thank you to Mr. Imbush, to Maria Hall and her team who provided the food for the event, to Ms. Mack and Student Council students who were there to provide childcare for attendees. It was great to have the school department really supporting the, the process. We had a really excellent turnout, lots of community members came in person and participated in small group discussions to talk about, you know, their, their future vision of Walpole, what they like about our town, what they want to preserve, what, what they think might be missing, and something we want to address in the future. The conversations, I think, were really productive, Mrs. Gallivan was there, part of a group too, and it was nice to see different neighbors coming together, there actually was quite a lot of common ground and similar ideas shared, and it was, it was great. And so, if people were not able to attend in person last night, I just want to remind people that there are going to be two virtual ways of participating between now and November 22nd, and some of that information was released today, but they're still finalizing one of the options. So, one of the options is a, it's called a Miro board, and it's sort of a virtual picture, like easel pads with sticky notes that you can fill out and kind of share your input. There's also going to be a more traditional online survey that gets released very shortly, and so anybody in town is welcome to participate via one or both of those formats and share their opinions at this stage, and the next community forum will be held in the springtime as the plan gets further along.
Mr. Ahern, questions?
Quick question, how do you get access to the Miro board?
Great question, so I know that they are working on distributing that information via multiple email lists in town.
Okay.
You know, the rec department, council on aging, I think maybe even the school department email, and they actually are also going to be, have staff in person at the library on specific dates to assist people who might want some help navigating, and all that information is going to be going out from Pat DeShane's office in the next day or two.
Thanks.
Anything further? Seeing none, any other subcommittees report? Mrs. Gallivan?
Just a thought that maybe we should get on the calendar in December for the superintendent's eval, just so that we have that conversation before the year ends.
Very good. Anything further? Seeing none, moving on, citizens' comments, seeing no citizens? We'll move on to approval of warrants, donations and minutes.
I will step in for that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. 222-018, 222-019, and 222-020.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ahern, second by Ms. Donizio, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the following payroll warrants for the amounts listed in your packets. It is 2218 PA and 2220 PA.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ahern, second by Ms. Donizio, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600. Anyone like to take donations?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations, to Boyd and School from Teresa B. Delaney and James L. Delaney in memory of Bev Fusile, the Boyd and Media Center donation in the amount of $25. To Boyd and School, Old Post Road School, Fisher School, Byrd Middle School and Johnson Middle School, from Bay State Textiles Recycling, in the amount of $270. To Old Post Road School, from the John D. Langley Foundation, nonfiction book donation in the amount of $825. And to Byrd Middle School, Help See Commission, in the amount of $10.78.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second by Ms. Sarik, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600. We thank the community for their generous donations, would someone like to take the approval of minutes?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 28th, 2021 school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sarik, second by Ms. Donizio, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Sarik, all those in favor, opposed, abstained, 600. Thank you very much, there is no score at the Patriots game.